It is a war in your mind. We stand with all the citizens and people who have been there, who are connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salem, make the city central school district to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of the district. Thank you.
Oh, we have microphones. Awesome. All right, I'm Kerry John, Vice President of the School Board, sitting in for President Teresa Ray. And we may be coming later, but may not be. She was detained at work today. So right now, we're going to go over the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are a couple of agenda meetings that were changed. Three A, we added the PowerPoint that goes along with the short presentation. We added a travel request for Ray Haley. We added the project phase for summary report and the enrollment twenty twenty five report. And for nine F, we also added the I P C minutes from January eighth, and we removed the executive session for first.
Okay. Any questions? And to get a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Was my deal second my bread? Any other questions, anything? All in favor, say hi. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. So item three A is the presentation on the attendance policy. Okay. Oh, yeah, I didn't even know. I didn't see you was on there.
That's okay.
Christian, we didn't see you on the Zoom, sorry.
Now you go, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I'm driving. What's that?
Did you vote yes on the approval of the agenda?
Yep, yep, unless I say something, just because I'm driving, unless I abstain or say some, everything's gonna be a thumbs up. Or yes. Drive my best here to multitask.
Okay. I think that's how we can speed up meetings in the future.
That's right.
All right, thanks, Christian.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm just gonna talk briefly for your approval tonight is a attendance policy change. I took this slide because this goes hand in hand with the presentation that was given to us last month by our attendance officer, Mr. Brundage. Now, after several meetings with our attendance committee and we gathered input from a variety of stakeholders, we also compared our attendance policy with local school districts and then school districts across the state and across the nation are similar in size. And what we have here are some of the changes that we are proposing for the policy amendment. And just out of, you know, so we're aware, this policy has not been changed since twenty of twenty one. So a couple of things, one, student illness. At this point in time, a doctor's note is required for an absence to be excused. While this was put in place with the intent to ensure that ill students are actually ill, the practicality of this has become a challenge. If a student is out for one or two days due to an illness, it's not likely that they're going to go to a doctor. In fact, the local doctors have said, we don't want to see them if they're only gonna be sick for a day or two. You're overwhelming us with the requests for doctor notes. So the change here is that we're gonna go back to what we used to have, which is that a parent or doctor note is acceptable to verify an illness to be identified as excused. Another change is that students will be excused from school events for events or observances held by the Seneca Nation. So in the past, there's been some question over what type of a absence to qualify this as. We know midwinter ceremonies are coming up. These will be identified as excused absence when it's verified that the student has attended an event hosted or observed by the Seneca Nation. The third item is more of a compliance item. Up to this point, students received a little less than this for alternative instruction. So that's when students are homebound for medical reason or are on an out of school suspension status. The policy change is necessary because of the state requirements is that for great students in grades K through six, they will receive two hours of instruction per day. And in grade seven through twelve, they receive two point five or two and a half hours of instruction for a day in grade seven through twelve. One is is coming back. This used to be in place is that students who miss a significant number of days will be have the potentially be denied school credit. So students who miss fifteen or more days for a half year course or thirty or more days for a whole year course may be denied credit. I want to emphasize that may. It's important to note, especially for students who have a bona fide illness. And we have some students who are seriously injured, who are seriously ill, who are absent for a significant portion of the year. Those will of course be excused, but for students who are chronically absent, and this far exceeds chronically absent, this almost doubles the chronic absenteeism rate. So we're talking about twenty percent or one to two days a week. Potentially, they may get denied credit. And that would be really K through twelve. That will factor into grade level advancement. So the belief here, well, not just the belief, but we know, right, if a student misses forty or fifty days of fourth grade, they really haven't done fourth grade. We're talking about a third of the school year. So to just promote them to the next grade is quite likely to put them behind in a deficit, which will almost be impossible for them to catch up. So we need to sit down and have a very serious conversation when these significant absences occur. Is it really beneficial for the student to be progressed to the next grade and promoted? Or do they essentially need to do that grade again? The last item is that students who are denied course credit for attendance. So let's say we have a student who has been absent from, it could even be for one particular class at the high school. Just doesn't like to go to that class and misses forty or fifty days. They will have to simply retake that course during the academic year. At this point, there's sort of a loophole. They could go to summer school and acquire course credit for that, which we would like to see in times of excessive absence, but it's being abused to the point that now a student can let's say skip sixty days of a class and then go to summer school for four weeks or five weeks and pick up full credit for that. That's just not equitable in nature, and that's not the intent of summer school. So in order for that to occur, the student will have to take the full course during the academic year. That is not guaranteed to happen for a student. These will go to the attendance committee. We will work with the student and the parent. But it is important to note that this now provides that particular option, especially when we have students who have excessive numbers of absences. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this. Today will be the first reading of the policy change. And if anybody has questions, we're more than happy to answer them now or over the next couple meetings when we continue to address this.
Has there been an improvement from attendance last year up to this point, like now this year, like is and last year, there's a huge initiative with all the signs and the work and you know, everything that attendance committee has been working on. I'm just wondering, has have we seen any data or anything that's shown improvement or where are we at with that?
We have. I don't want to quote the numbers, but Mr. Brundage did do a presentation and updated us that we have seen an increase from last year in overall attendance. The real concern though is the, say, handful of students who are chronically absent. So and this is what that policy would address. So overall, and overall, attendance has improved for everybody. But we still have a number of students who fall into that chronic absentee, and that's ten percent or more. Many of those students are well into the twenties or thirty percent of the academic school year.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Certainly. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for that presentation, Dr. Wheeler. There were no questions, nobody had any questions? Okay. All right, so move on to item number four, communications. A, public communications, and then title six, parent advisory committee. We have anyone signed up to speak?
What was your question to speak?
What about title six?
I think we'll do a couple of updates, keep things rolling today. Just to reiterate, we do have our social media pages out for Indigenous Parent Committee. That's on Salamaka Indigenous Parent Committee on Facebook. We share same things on working with Levi as well as the Native Services. And all of the school has a page. New page, it's under the Salamaka C S E Native Services, and that's for with everyone, including NACT, M B K, teachers, anything that involves of any new students. It's gonna be shared on that page. Obviously, the I P C page is pretty specific to I P C and it's about the work they do there. So that's why we wanted to open up a new page. So again, that was just under Salamaka C S E Native Services, just in case you need that. And so you can keep up to date on everything we're doing there. Every all the presenters, assemblies, field trips, everything like that, everything in general this year. S Y D fundraiser is gonna be finishing up on the nineteenth. That's the apparel and T shirts, and that's all going on all the social medias as well. You guys get a chance to look at those links to online stores. Feel free to support. We have a great crew of like around fifty students in Bama this year that have been participating since the beginning of the year. As well as with our Indigenous Youth Council, we have a pretty solid fifteen students of them. They're gonna be planning to take a trip to Washington this year. I believe we even have some in the crowd, which is awesome to see. Maybe one of these days I'll have to put them on the spot and give a little presentation for you guys on what we're doing with I Y C. Maybe we'll give it next night.
Put them on the spot tonight, yeah.
I mean, I see it. I see David Crane up here. My name are officers for I Y C. Is there any updates you'd like to give?
No, today we got approved. It's all for the fourteen, two nights. We get it for our own. Then we go to the museum.
Awesome. Yeah, and they also, so last year, they even helped prepare my presentation for the M I W Assembly and certain things that we do. So they do have small paths like that as well. It is fun to do those trips as well. Still fun to work. Just to move on, we do have a half day assembly at Prospect School at ten A M. On the twenty fourth of this month, we're bringing Old Bridge in, doing Edmanircoys and Native American cultural rendition of the Big Drum style and Ericois style for for all the grades in Prospect. Stop down if you're able to see that or check out the pictures on Facebook afterwards on those social media accounts. And then the, so the family literacy night as well, we just locked in Leora White. She's gonna be able to do three sessions for the family, the literacy night X, the Seneca's pool on the twenty third, and she'll be making sessions from five to six, just different stories and Seneca's Seneca legends. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention something that was mentioned at one of our native services meetings that we are having now on a weekly basis is that N I E A this year is gonna be in Spokane, Washington. And next year, it's gonna be in Buffalo in twenty twenty six, which is amazing, that right in our backyard. Again, we as a school, we're the twenty twenty three William Demerit Cultural Freedom Award winners. It's the most prestigious high school award. MVP award, almost, I guess you can, you will, for for high schools, we were the twenty twenty three winners of that. Which I do know Rachel still is hanging on to that plaque somewhere, which I would love to see up in the school somewhere. So that's a possibility, maybe at an I E C meeting or something, we can bring that up. Find the budgeting maybe for a case or somewhere, because I do think that is a big award, especially for our new services and our students and everything we've done through the last twenty three, however many years. That, I mean, I give a lot to Rachel as well, because I feel she was a big part of winning that award. The first speech and everything that she was able to offer. It turned twenty years keeping language. That's kind of why I still fight every day for for what we do for the services. So again, that'd be awesome to see that plaque up in the school somewhere. I think we deserve it. And then just to mention that N I A was, we would love to see maybe an administrator or a board member go next calendar year. It'd be nice to see. We've sent many teachers, we've sent students, Aubrey and Ava went a couple of years ago. And we met a lot of superintendents and board members and other people that have went and got great experience that were not native or native or whatever that we unfortunately didn't go with our superintendent that time or whatever it was. So it'd be really cool to have some administrators or board members maybe to Spokane. So think about it, that's coming in October. If one of you guys can able to talk it over in some months ago, or maybe an administrator that you guys feel is appropriate, Seneca, Prospect and maybe talk to her, I think it'd be good to see to send one of you guys to or a couple of you to Spokane over the next couple of years. So yeah, that's all, just kind of way ahead of time, but you know, as a grant writer, that is kind of how I handle it. So just to keep that in mind for you guys, because there is a pretty decent list of who can go already and who we have kind of feel would be most appropriate to go for our teachers and students and things like that. So amongst yourselves, maybe when I want to just say, hey, can you go or something, it'd be cool that maybe one of you guys become to us one of these times and say, hey, you know, one of us are interested, and you know, let's talk about it every year, another time about it. So that's all I want to throw out there. It's kind of a lot. If you guys have any questions.
No. No, that was awesome. Thanks for the update. Thanks, Eric. The N I E A, I'm sure has been on a lot of our radar over the years. And like for me personally, it just conflicts with a lot of other things. I think it's the very next week, we have our NISM conference, which usually takes a couple of days away. So you know, the track, the traveling, it's, do we go to N I A or do we go to NISM? And over the years, a lot of us have prioritized the NISM conference. You know, that's that's specifically for board members. So that's that's just been one of the things is travel. Absolutely. Some some people might have the luxury to travel every week of the month, but yeah.
I definitely, and that is why I do mention the Buffalo one too, because you might be able to take advantage of that a little better. Try to just drive up for even a day or two or a half day or something like that to check it out.
Well, a couple of years ago, I went to the Niagara Falls for the New York State N I A.
Yeah, yeah.
That was a pretty good conference. That was good presentations up there. So that was a good event. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody questions, anything? All right, thank you. We'll move on to central office message. I see we have Nikki here and Chris Karen, by the way.
She is at a conference. She's a neighbor's porter girl.
Oh, okay. All right, Nikki, wanna know?
Yeah, I just have a few updates. First, I just wanna recognize all the students in the room. Thank you so much for coming. I want to continue to recognize our staff and our administrators for their continued celebrations across all the buildings in regards to attendance, student achievement, growth and character trait. I think we, after in our presentation today, can see that celebrating attendance is making improvements. So that's good. Continue to talk about it and recognize it. I want to recognize that Seneca School, I was chatting with the teachers and they wanted to shout out our new schedule that we put in place of Seneca, that the teachers eat lunch with the students. And they just are finding strong relationship building and a different connection with the students during that time. So I just wanted to highlight that. The remedial plan that the high school put in place at the five week mark showed improvement in their grades at the end of the quarter. So shout out to teachers and healthers and liaison for putting in work to help with those remedial plans. The six one one classroom at Seneca, I wanted to recognize that the parents in that classroom made Jerry Parisi aware that they have experienced significant increase in the food's desire to want to come to school and improvement in their skills. Bringing that six one one back to district. So I think that's really often to highlight that. We had thirty five students participate in our winter reading challenge at Prospect. And just so let you know, we're already thinking about next year. We're already ahead of the typical timeline with pre K and kindergarten registration. So communication's gonna be coming out about that soon. And just to recognize, two thousand twenty one alumni Connor Flute, he visited our students last, I believe, the last week, and he came in and did some game design and drone esports. He's part of Monroe Community College esports team. It's what we spend time completing. That's a college level gamer. So that's always awesome when we have our alumni come back. With that, the this month's character trait is integrity. So just wanna put out to our students to continue to be honest, to do the right thing, be accountable and consistent, working hard, and time is important and the luck all around.
Thank you. Well, I see we got a light crowd tonight, so we're gonna go all into the audience here. We'll start with Mr. Bartoszak. What do you got for us?
Thank you. I would just like to highlight a few things from the winter. Our boys and our girls' basketball teams are ranked in the state. That's pretty cool. Our wrestling program is filling out its its weight classes like it never has before. We're competing in dual meet, and we also added competitive, you know, female wrestling into our programming. That's four to six wrestlers each week that are that are wrestling, and we're a part of the section community. For their girls, so. Indoor track is rolling. I was gonna say bowling is rolling, but that would have been a little corny. But indoor tracks can have some sexual qualifiers, potential state qualifiers, we might be asking for more people to go out to our those events. Fall saw all of our teams reach scholar athlete team level, which is the first time we've had that. Dive in here. Today, we learned that one of our cross country runners, Saint of the P M L State, Mariana Brady, so that's pretty cool. She represented us this fall. Our cheer team will be competing, which should be the second level. They did in the fall, they're gonna do so in the winter. But it's cool for them as they progress. Also, we hosted an archery tournament that Saturday, which is the first time since COVID. That was pretty neat. I was there because my son was shooting, which is different, but it was awesome. And they did a great job, which made me think of D Club as well. There's just a lot of stuff going on, and we have a lot of great people who are running these clubs and making our programs function. So I'm just here to say thank you to all of them.
Any questions for Mr. Bartoszak? Mr. Pankowski, what's going on in our facilities?
Because I got one thing that really, just to talk about real quick, is the olive winner has really set in out there. Please be careful out there. If you see some areas that my guys happened to miss, but they've worked very hard. They try to get all the exits and areas and sidewalks. So just be careful out there. It's slippery in a lot of places, but just let me know if you see something that's really bad. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Berry. What's going on at the intermediate school?
Yeah, we are rocking and rolling since returning from break. I see everyone smiling faces when they return. We're carrying up for N W A, our winter benchmark. We actually started that today with our E L A testing. We're working through E L A and the map that we're doing this week. So teachers have been working with students to set goals and will review progress. How we've moved from fall to winter. We have our CEO celebration coming up this week on Thursday, where we're recognizing our chief example for others, our leaders from our member and December character trait, gratitude and responsibility. Mrs. Bartoszak will be coming to speak with our students at that celebration. And then on the twenty third, we have our literacy night at Seneca Intermediate. So theme is cozy up with a good book. We're gonna allow our students to wear pajamas that day to promote the literacy evening. We raise the securely or white. Thank you, Aaron Miller. And we act for getting that for us. Our station, I think we'll also be there to provide some families with our students this evening. Our act of celebration will be the end of the month when we're ready.
Thank you. Before I get to you, Mr. Wong, I see Mrs. Rootay is on the line. Do you have anything from Prospect for us?
Hello, of course I do. I was going to interrupt you if you didn't call on me. We have a lot of great things going on at Prospect. I'm super excited. We have N W E A testing. Of course, we started that today. Really aligning ourselves with Seneca. So we have our testing today and tomorrow. Excited about that. We have our, Nikki kind of touched on our reading challenge. So we had thirty five students kind of turn that in, so we're excited about that. We're ahead on our typical timeline for pre K and kindergarten registration. So that's exciting. We have our monthly assembly coming up for our character trait. We kind of shine some light on celebrating students who are working on our character trait of the month. We have partnered with the fire department, so we're really excited about that. We, the fire department has a program called Adopt a Fire Hydrant, where students throughout the year maintain a a fire hydrant. And so we had five winners at our school that rode the fire truck into school, which was super exciting. So the kids had a little tour of that. The fire department brought in donuts to celebrate the the winner. So that was exciting. We also have our new scouts program after school, so that started yesterday. And that will continue through March. We have we've about forty five students that signed up for that. So we're excited about that. Of course, we have our Old Bridge singers and dancers coming next week for our half day. And then coming up in February, our our grade level data meetings, where we will have our teachers work together and collaborate and analyze student performance. So we're excited about all the things going on at Prospect.
Thank you. Mr. Wong, all right, what's happening in the high school?
Just real quick, this one's a highlight, right? One of the biggest highlights for me this year, prior to break, we had nine students tap the National Honor Society, which is just our academic champions here. To put it in a sports perspective, it's like winning the Super Bowl. The students are putting the time and dedication to their academics and just super proud to get the chills even talking about it. I mean, that's the focus. That's why we're here, as well as the whole person. We're very proud of those nine students. Very smooth transition from the holiday. Students came back. I think they're ready to see their friends and be in school. So I was very, very pleased with the way that they jumped right back in the saddle and got to their academics. Couple updates, we do have midterm regions and half year courses with their finals coming up next week. So just asking students and parents to prepare for those, the same old thing that you've been probably hearing since kindergarten, get a good night's sleep, eat a breakfast, you know, study and come in confident and do your best. Other than this, counseling department's been busy working towards the twenty five, twenty six schedule. So parents, please be talking to your students about any elective courses that they might be interested in. We are, we have four academies that will be open next year with our Academy of Finance, Academy of Hospitality and Tourism, Academy of Natural Resources and our Health Sciences. So since they're interested in fields that would fall under one of those umbrellas, should really be looking to get involved in those electives and gear up so that they're a little bit ahead of the game graduating from high school. On that, just excitement being back in the building.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or anything? All right, I think we'll move along now to our Board of Education message. And you know what? We'll go right to the virtual. Christian, do you have anything to say for us?
Yeah, thanks, Kerry. First off, I just want to thank everybody for being there tonight. I apologize I couldn't be there in person as a a number of us, including the Seneca Nation President and a bunch of other counselors, attended the Governor State of the State address today. And it was a great event, and we had some singers. And it was a great event and we had some singers that walked in with us and it was very powerful. All of us wore ribbon shirts, guestolats. And we were very well received and I want to say we made a pretty good impact and a lot of our messages were heard loud and clear. So it was definitely a successful trip. So there's the reasoning behind me not being able to be there tonight. Obviously, I've been super engulfed with the new the new role. So I apologize for not being around as much lately. And hopefully we'll start to lighten up. Maybe, maybe not, but we'll be back there in person here hopefully soon. One big thing I wanted to touch on, which I was wondering if Chad was going to or not, but I I appreciate him leaving it for me to to speak about was this past Saturday, the Selma Warriors football team, the cheerleaders and the coaches all attended council. Obviously, Kerry, you're aware of this. I'm sure many of the others are aware aware as well. But it was just a super special event. I was very honored. I was I was honored to be able to give a speech on behalf of the council. And, you know, I want to say, you know, all things considered, kind of put together last minute, you know, a week or two in advance. I want to commend and thank Chad and the athletic department for getting so many student athletes out there just because that was a super special event and a day. And I just, yeah, look forward to celebrating you guys again later on this month. Last last week, I want to commend our I C or the NAC team and all, everybody, all the good work they were doing there. I was so fortunate to be able to attend that meeting in person. It was just, I left feeling really good and powerful and excited about the work that everyone's doing. I want to commend Aaron, Rachel, Gabby, everybody, Michelle, the whole team and everything they're doing there. And ultimately, I'd like to eventually be able to bring them in or somehow have them present to our leadership, our Seneca Nation leadership on some of the work they're doing as well, because it's very commendable and I want to, they're doing a great job. Kerry, how's the weather there right now? Is there snow in there? Is there snow back in Selma right now? Or what's the weather like?
Unfortunately, it stopped snowing.
Oh, okay. Well, either way, I I heard you call on Rich. I just wanted to give a a quick shout out to our facilities department, you know, being a former you know, facilities guy myself, you know, those guys are, you know, key components to getting everyone into the school safely and out of school safely and as well as our our bus drivers, getting our transporting our students to school safely. So I just want to give everybody a huge shout out. Thanks for everybody, all the hard work everyone's doing. I appreciate all the reports. I appreciate all the good work everyone's doing. And I think that kind of summarizes summarizes my my report. So thank you, Kerry.
All right. Thank you, Christian. Travel safe.
Appreciate you, brother. I don't know how you make this trip back and forth to Albany so many times, but boy, man, this is boring.
Autopilot.
All right.
Autopilot.
Appreciate you guys.
All right, Tracy.
Um, I'd just like to welcome the students to that meeting tonight. And I'd also like to thank our coaches and volunteers and parents and everybody who helps make all of our events and activities a success. Ed?
No, that was about what I was going to say. Just welcome everybody back from break. We're getting closer to warm weather. We're into a new year and just stay warm and stay safe with the way the weather's been lately.
Right?
I just want to say happy new year and good luck to everybody who has tests. I know it bothers an eight period. She's got her first midterms and she's super excited about that.
Yeah, likewise, I'd like to welcome everybody here. I think this is one of our largest crowds so far. It's close, yeah. I just want to say thanks to everybody who puts in extra time, you know, keeping the place warm, rich and, you know, safe for everybody. Thank you. Thank you very much. And it is going to be minus five next week. So Kerry, you make a lot to know up there for you. So that's all. Yeah, thanks. You know, there's there's been a few shout outs going in Rich's way. You know, there was an old saying that I remember back in the day. If you're warm when you walk in the building and if you're cool during summer and you walk in the building, thank the facilities guy.
That's right.
You know, I've I've heard a bunch of bunch of great stuff tonight, you know, and it kind of changed the things that I wanted to say. But one of these, like, like a couple, a couple of our central office messages, there's some really cool things happening. You know, Aaron talking about the the presentation that's going to happen next week, you know, bringing in singers, bringing in Old Bridge singers. Storytelling and literacy night, you know. Chad, that's awesome. We had scholar athlete teams, you know. But I got to say, the highlight for me is having kids show up to school on the fire truck. I think that I think that takes the cake. I mean, of all the cool stuff going on, I think that I think that's it right there, riding in on the fire truck. So, but thank you all for sharing a little bit of your world and your day with us. As you know, it's pretty much custom anymore. If I'm chairing the meeting, I'm calling on you guys to see what you have to say with us. So, yeah, I want to thank all of our staff across across the whole entire district. You know, thank you guys for everything you do. We just come out of the the season of being thankful and grateful for everything we have, and I want to continue that. I'm thankful and grateful for all of our staff doing everything you guys do for us. And what it comes down to is we're doing it for a lot of these people who are sitting in the audience, the students, the kids in this district. That's what all this hard work goes for. It's to help make your guys' educational experience the best it can be. Hopefully that helps you move on into the future into successful young adults. That's really what we're striving for. And like I said, I thank I thank our staff every single board meeting, but that's the reason why is because of you guys who are here. And I appreciate all the students being here. This is this is one of our best showings as far as students go. The last meeting, we had quite a few and I didn't, honestly, I didn't count, but we might beat that tonight. We got more students here than we had last meeting. So thanks for showing up, guys. Appreciate it. Like I said, I had a lot more I was going to say, but you know, that kind of, there's there's too many good things right now to talk about. So I'll just leave on hope for more snow. Ski club is rocking and rolling. If you're a winter enthusiast, which everyone should be, get out there on the slopes and have some fun. So that's all I have. Dr. Miller?
A couple notes for our students and staff. It's the end of the second quarter, end of the first semester. You have a couple of weeks left or so to grind it out. If you need help, there are plenty of people who are here to help. So just say something. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the Western New York Indigenous Education Educasina. Which is a bit of a mouthful. It used to be called the Native American Regional Forum, but we renamed ourselves. And the focus on that was indigenous languages and the state certification. So we got some new information and we'll be working together to assist the future educators to help get certified. We were also informed that and tying in with N A I E A, the New York Indigenous Education Association will be having their meeting June fifth and sixth at Clarkson and Constam, New York. Last week, we were notified by Power School. And Power School, most of our students and parents know in one form or another is what's referred to as our student management system, our student information system. It's basically where all the information about students go and where we create schedules and track all sorts of records. Power School is a very large corporation and there are over fifty five million students that use it in ninety countries. But we were informed that they had a cybersecurity breach. I placed the information out on our website, all the information that we have at this point in time. We have not been absolutely confirmed that any of our information has been compromised. The initial reports are is that the information may have been compromised, but it has not been shared with anyone. But as we learn more information, we will make sure to be pass that along. We just want to be completely transparent with that and share as much information as possible. I did want to share. Let's see, there we go. Some positive news. And there it is right there. So superintendent hearings, superintendent hearings are the sort of pinnacle of our discipline process. These are hearings that are occur typically with an attorney and parents. The attorney serves as the hearing officer. These occur when students have a very serious infraction of the COVID contacts. And the district is looking to likely suspend out of school for more than five days. Most often that's done for drug related offenses or for violent acts that occur in the school. The superintendent hearings are also one of the ways that we can sort of assess how things are going in a school. And I just wanted to share that this year we have an all time low number of superintendent hearings that have occurred this year. We are currently at four superintendent hearings for the year. And as a point of reference, at this time last year, we had twenty one. And that was a larger number. Previous to that, we usually hover in the ten to fifteen range. But I wanted to acknowledge that this isn't just accidental. When you have a drastic decrease in major discipline infractions, it's due to attentiveness across the board. And typically, these occur at the high school. So I basically wanted to acknowledge that the hard work of our administrators and our teachers being present in the halls during passing times, which is where many times bad things happen, I guess. It's times of transition and when there may not be supervision, but I know there's been a focus on supervision in the hallways. There's also been attentiveness to drug infractions. And then what I believe has contributed to this and Mr. Wong has paid and Mr. Cruz have paid close attention to are the small violations, right? When you pay attention to the very small things, the large things typically don't happen. So I just wanted to, you'll probably hear more about the the future, but I just wanted to share this. This is very positive news. It reflects across the entire high school with the the general discipline that we're seeing. And congratulate both our administrative staff, our teaching staff and our students as well. Thank you.
All right. All right, so we'll move on now. Item number five, our consent agenda. We have financial items. We have a travel conference and running trips. C S E recommendations, C C S E recommendations. And I'll take a motion before approving the consent agenda. Motion by Tracy, second by Dale. Any questions on any of it? Usually I'd ask Karen if she was on about our cafeteria finances, but she's not here, so I'll save for the next meeting. All right, all in favor? Opposed?
Hi.
Okay, abstained. Okay, motion carries. All right, we have no old business. We have item number seven, new business, a donation, Seneca Gaming. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and the Prospect Holiday Program, the Selma City Central School District Board of Education adopts a one time donation from Seneca Gaming in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars worth of toys to the Prospect Elementary School to be used towards the Prospect School Holiday Program and a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Christian.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you, Seneca Gaming. Item B, we have a donation from M P Morgan LLC. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Selma City Central School District Board of Education accepts a one time donation from M P Morgan LLC Steenberg Smoke Shop in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to the Seneca Intermediate School and High School Drama Club to be used towards musical costumes, set pieces and props and a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. Can I get a motion? Motion. Motion by Ted, second by Brad. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you, M P Morgan LLC. Item C, Bowse's twenty five, twenty six unit cost methodology. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Selma City Central School District approves the the proposed basis of service charges of Keteragus Allegheny Erie Wyoming Bowse's for the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. Can I get a motion? Motion by Brad. Second by Tracy. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed, abstained? Hey, motion carries. And I am the special education extended school year twenty twenty five. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and the Director of Special Education, the Board of Education approves the special education extended school year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six dates of July seventh, twenty five through August fifteenth, twenty five for students with disabilities receive the services noted on their individual education plans or I E Ps per the Part two hundred regulations. Can I get a motion? Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions?
Dr. Miller, this is just to extend services for the special education department or students, like essentially that needed additional services? Or can you break that down really quick for me?
Sure. Some of the students that we have that are classified as students with disabilities have a provision on their individual education plan or I E P that they essentially attend school all year long. And what this does is it identifies the dates from July seventh to August fifteenth as what we refer to as the extended school year. You will hear additional information in the next month or so as we start talking about summer school programming and enrichment for the rest of our students who aren't necessarily required or entitled to this through N I E Ps.
Thank you. All right, all right, any other questions? Okay, can I get all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, the next one. Item E, Contract Hazard Young, Atia and Associates. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the letter of agreement for strategic plan development with Hazard, Young, Atia and Associates or H Y A to support the strategic planning process in the amount in accordance with the contract effective on the date the agreement is signed by the district and will continue in effect until the strategic plan is completed and mutually terminated by both parties and authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions?
Yeah, just could I apologize. I tried to get the agenda pulled up, like, to get the materials and look it over. I couldn't. Strategic planning for for what, Dr. Miller? Or what does this entail?
So I believe it was five years ago, maybe six years ago, the district underwent a strategic planning process with an organization called Ed Elements. We discussed this, whether or not, probably about a year ago that it was time to update that and develop a plan that would give us about a five to ten year range of what our goals, what our vision is, and then specifically the action steps that we need to take to achieve those. We put this out in the form of a request for proposals, maybe late summer. We had several organizations that responded. A team of educators, staff members and administrators interviewed five of those organizations. And we settled on this particular organization that likely in about a month, we will be getting many members of the community, students and our staff members together to sit down for relatively lengthy process, not a lifelong commitment, but several weeks to look at the strategic plan that we had developed a few years ago and then put a new one together that will guide our actions in alignment with the board goals as we move forward.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item eight, our personnel consent agenda. Under item A, we have quite a few on here and a big group of our student teachers from St. Bonaventure. So be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the personnel action items listed in the public content of section eight, item A. Can I get a motion? Motion by Ted, second by Brad. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, opposed, abstained? I want to make one note. I do oppose the resignation of Julian Green. But I, but I am for in favor on everything else.
What was that name, Kerry?
Julian Green. District Nurse Manager.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something we need to, like, pull off that resolution and do it separately? Or just note it? I'll just note it. I have no idea.
Okay, uh, we move on to item C, Personal Action Number Two, Extended Probation. Uh, we have several folks who are having extended probation, uh, being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the Personnel Action Items Listed in the Public Content of Section Eight, Item C. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions? Absolutely.
Uh, I just want to make sure that we're all clear that these are extended due to a variety of reasons. It's primarily compliance with regulations. It has nothing to do with teacher performance or, uh, any concerns that we have over them. Most of these are simply due to some potential lapses in certification during the probationary period or leaves of absence that might have been taken for medical reasons, but it is absolutely not connected to performance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Miller.
Any questions? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, motion carries. Uh, Dr. Miller, do we have any introductions?
I have done my best, but I do not believe I see anyone here or virtually that this applies to them. Okay, but we will welcome them when we see them in person.
Awesome. Alright, so item nine, the Board Information Reports Discussion. It looks like we have a, uh, teacher assistant swapping positions. I mean, B, uh, we have our first reading of Policy Seventy-One Ten, our Comprehensive Student Independence Policy. Our Capital Project Phase Four Summary Report Number Eleven, enrollment in January twenty-twenty-five. Uh, we have our Indigenous Education Meeting Minutes of January eighth and we have upcoming events. Um, what are we looking at here? Finance Committee on January twenty-first, a Board of Education meeting, and the next one is on January twenty-eighth, five-thirty, right in this location. Uh, February eighth, we have Eligent Keteragas Association of School Lords Annual Legislative Breakfast to be held at eight-thirty in the Holy Anne City School District. February eleventh, we have another B O E meeting right here at five-thirty. Um, I'm sure everyone's putting these on their calendars just to make sure. So, alright. Uh, February twelfth, Indigenous, Indigenous Education Committee Meeting, four o'clock, right here, February. Yeah.
Hey, I'm sorry to interject. I just thought while it's on my brain and you said that the next, it's February eleventh is next B O E meeting?
No, January twenty-eighth.
January, oh yeah, January twenty-eighth. Did there something February eleventh as well, you said?
Yeah, so our next meeting, January twenty-eighth, February.
Okay, good.
And February twenty-fifth. And every, this room is putting it in their calendar as we speak, just so they know it'll be in attendance.
Yeah, then that's what I was saying. So I can, uh, I'll, um, the February eleventh one, I'm likely, now I'm seventy-thirty still, but I might be in DC for N C A I, but, um, I can still do virtual if that's okay with everybody, but I can be there. I will be there later this month. So I just wanted to let everybody know.
Alright, we'll let this one slide.
I appreciate you guys. Appreciate you guys. I know you guys miss me being there. I'm just gonna keep asking questions till I get home. Try to drag this meeting out as long as possible.
I don't have, I don't have to call for adjournment. We can keep going.
No, let the kids get going home.
Alright, so if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ted, second by Dale. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstained? Okay. Motion approved, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming.